Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, September 13th, 2023, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Let's try that again. Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Scambalori?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's continue with our land and labor acknowledgement. Vice President Piedmont Smith.
We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you. And continuing with our agenda summation, we have one set of minutes to approve this evening from the regular session on December 7th, 2022. We then will continue with reports, including reports from council members, reports from the mayor and city offices, reports from council committees, and then we will come to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then we'll go move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have two items there. The first is Ordinance 2321 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending Section 15.32.150 to remove the four-hour limit on all accessible spaces. The second item there is Ordinance 2320 to amend Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers regarding establishing a new section 12.04.130 entitled Obstructing the Right-of-Way. We have no legislation for first reading this evening, so we will then move into our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So with that, let's go to approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move the approval of the December 7th, 2022 regular session minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Let's move into reports from council members. I'd like to start on my far right this evening with Councilmember Flaherty.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi. You just did a quick report tonight. You know, I don't remember where we did this, but we put up the no-turn on red signs in the downtown overlay and the Bloomington campus stoplights to make it safer for everyone using the streets. Some people have brought to my attention that, of course, some folks don't pay attention to the signs, just like turn right on red anyway. But recently, I have heard that there are multiple people have seen police officers not paying attention to the sign and turning right on red. So I just kind of wanted to take a second to say, like, you know, we are public servants, and let's try to do what's right and set a good example and follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Councilmembers Rosenbarger, Flaherty, and myself were at the Local Progress National convening last week, but we will have a report for next week's meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
No report. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Just announcing the Rallo-Sandberg Monthly Constituent Meeting will be this Saturday at 10:00. That is a Zoom meeting, and that link can be found on the city council and the event calendar. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I'd like to report a disturbing incident that raises a number of questions. The story has come out today, or recently, in the Herald Times about an incident that happened a year ago. A black graduate student named Moses Berrio Jr. was leaving the SRSC, and I'm just going to read several paragraphs from the Herald Times report. Berrio, who was employed at IU's Office of Sexual Violence Prevention and at the Bannaker Community Center, had left work and gone to IU's Student Recreation Center to work out. When he left and drove to the pay booth at the exit, the attendant wouldn't take the $5 bill Berrio offered for the $3 parking fee. No cash accepted, just cards. The attendant said they could charge the fee to Berrio's Bursar account, that it would be $13.50. Berrio didn't want to pay the $10 extra. Vehicles were backing up, so the attendant raised a stop arm and let Berrio through, telling him to have someone bring a credit card to pay the $3. Berrio drove home. He figured the $13.50 was charged to his IU account. He didn't know the parking attendant had called the police. Later, the two police officers from the IPD appeared at his apartment complex, and they saw him in the parking lot. And the story continues, "The two men were standing on opposite sides of the hood on a car parked in the apartment complex lot. Suddenly, defendant Magnus quickly approached plaintiff and grabbed and twisted his arm. He and another officer then knocked the plaintiff, he's suing, off balance and into a car and put handcuffs on him. They then took him to jail and booked him in." I have a number of questions here, the least of which are, why couldn't IU just have taken down the driver's license plate and then sent him a fine in the mail? Why didn't the attendant inform the student that police would be called if he left without paying? And it gets to bigger questions like, why does IU even have a police force? And what on God's green earth are they doing pursuing someone over a $3 parking fine? Arrested? I've watched the video. The video has now been released, and the officers make no effort to explain why they're there, what it's for. The student asks about it, and he's perceived as being unhelpful, and he's immediately manhandled and arrested. I'm still wrapping my head around it. I urge everyone to watch the video, if you haven't already seen it. IU has released a statement about it. There's been a settlement. But it calls into question any number of things, not the least of which is, how is it happening here after all this time? And what is IU going to do about it beyond simply changing its processes? I thank you for your time. I just want to call everyone's attention to the incident from last year and to work towards preventing such things from ever happening again. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no report this evening, so that takes us to the report from mayor and city offices. We do not have any this evening. Are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none, that brings us to our first of two periods of public comment. Just by way of reminder for the public, this is for, yeah, public comment on items not on the legislative agenda. So for example, when we get to Ordinance 2321 or 2320, then you'll have an opportunity to comment on that legislation. So Mr. Lucas, can you please extend our invitation on Zoom? And may I see a show of hands here in chambers for how many people would like to offer public comment? I see one? No. Okay. Two.
See, one hand raised at the moment on Zoom, and if there are other members of the public attending virtually that would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can find the raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, and if you can't locate that, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. See just one hand at the moment.
Okay. And I saw two hands here, so let's actually get started here in chambers then, if you would, please. Welcome. Please go ahead and approach the podium and sign in, and if you would, share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Hello. First thing I want to say is, support your local police. That is an isolated case.
Could you share your name for the record, please?
We the people.
And can you share your individual name?
I protest this evening.
Would the clerk please note that this individual in the past has identified himself as Daryl Rubel, and I invite him to correct me if that is not the case? Thank you. Please go ahead. You'll have five minutes.
You stated my name, I did. I'm here for we the people. Like I said, support your local police. See, that's an isolated case. Eight years ago, okay? I dealt with Bloomington Police and IU. Them guys are the most professional people in the world. That's an isolated case, okay? But I had a great experience with a Bloomington Police officer Monday. I had a vehicle stolen out of my yard Sunday night. I called Bloomington Police. I called Bloomington Police Monday morning when I found out it was stolen. I called them. They had an officer up there in 15 minutes. Had an officer up there 15 minutes. Hey, my vehicle's gone. Officer Thomas, Bloomington Police Department, come up there. Very professional, I mean, the whole way. And I gave him all the information about my vehicle stuff, and he took all that. He left, and I left, and I went to, I had an idea where my vehicle may be because it was a kind of a family affair, right? And as I was going to check out where my vehicle, I thought, was, it got stolen, Officer Thomas called me, said, "Daryl, we found your vehicle." And this was within 45 minutes of me calling the police about my vehicle being stolen. He called me, said, "Daryl, we got your vehicle," and he was very concerned because he knew I was upset that my vehicle was stolen, okay? There's a good story about the police right there, okay? They're good guys, man. That's an isolated case, Stephen, okay?
Thank you.
That's correct. And please address the chair with your comments.
Okay, that's an isolated case, though. But another thing, too, you know, I'm concerned about, I don't know the whole story. I'm kind of slow on the story because I'm busy all day working on my cars, doing my stuff for therapy because I live by myself and I do stuff, and I get therapy by doing that stuff. But I don't have a lot of time to watch the news. Sometimes I do, but I caught a little thing the other day that you guys had voted or somehow, I don't know how it went, I'm still doing some homework on it, but you guys are giving money for women to go to other states to have an abortion? Oh, really? Paying women to go to other states to have abortions? Really? That's evil. I've got 16 grand babies, man. I would never think of doing that to my grandbaby. And you know another thing? You know the one thing I haven't ever heard about abortion is, where's the father, man? All you hear is the woman. I want to abort my baby. Well, where's the guy at, man? The guy that helped conceive that baby? Does he not have a say in what happens to that baby? They must be cowards. I haven't heard a single story where a guy stood up and said, "Woman, I don't want you to abort my baby." Why not? Not even one story. I don't want my baby aborted, but, you know, that baffles me. Why there's not one guy says, "Hey, I don't want you to abort my baby." But you just don't hear that. I want to know where that guy is. If you're out there and that's you, you're a coward, man. You need to save your baby. That upsets me, man. And you know, buddy, if you abort your baby in 20 years when you're at the beach and you see little babies, little kids running around on the beach playing, you might have a flashback, say, "Man, I wish I wouldn't have had, I wish I would have saved my baby. That could have been my baby out there. My baby could have been the person that cures cancer, could have been next president." But when you guys give money to people for women to go to other states to have an abortion, that's ghoulish. That's wrong. That's evil. But the main thing is, where's the guy at to help conceive that baby? Where's he at? And where's all the churches in Bloomington? Why are they not behind me, giving money for women to go to other states to murder their babies? You know, and if you guys want to give money for that, you guys ought to be made to go see a procedure. You ought to go with that woman. How's that woman feeling when she goes across state line, she's got that baby in her? She's carried a baby across state, and she comes back, that baby's gone. That baby is at the place where she's aborted the baby. How the hell could you have a nice trip back to Indiana? And I want to know where the father is of that baby that helped conceive that baby? Where is he? Save your babies, guys. Quit being a yellow-bellied coward son of a bitch.
Your time is up, Mr. Rubel. So, Mr. Lucas, let's go to Zoom.
Yes, first one's Zoom. Harold Canfield.
Ms. Canfield, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I saw in the paper recently that the city is considering four different parking lots downtown to put apartment buildings in, and one of the ones I'm concerned with in particular is the one behind all the restaurants in the Buzz Chum at the corner of Fourth and Washington. We've already gotten rid of, by closing Kirkwood, accessible parking along Kirkwood that makes it easier for people with mobility issues to park. Now they're eyeballing the parking lot behind the Buzz Chum, and this is where we park, since we can't park on Kirkwood now. This is where we park so that we don't have so far to walk, those of us who are not able to walk as easily as others. It's been said that there are a lot of spaces at the parking garage. That's great if you can get there and back. And with it being uphill from Kirkwood, where we like to go for events at the Buzz Chum and for restaurants there, that's a bit of a distance for some of us. I don't understand why we're getting rid of more parking downtown, why we're putting up more apartments, and where are you going to park the people that move into those apartments? But for a city that claims to be so accessible, we're doing everything we can to make it inaccessible for those of us who just can't ambulate like others. Let's think about that. You're taking away our accessibility to go downtown. It's getting harder and harder to park downtown, especially for people with accessibility issues. So let's think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Let's come here in chambers next. Please, welcome. If you would sign in and then state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Welcome, or I guess, good evening. My name is Alex Goodlad, and before I get to the comment on an item that literally that is not on the agenda, I wished it was, I want to sort of give a bit of an anecdote. So I saw a few of you guys at the Pride Parade. It was about, I think, a week, two weeks, two and a half weeks ago? Yeah. So I was at that Pride Parade, and what was kind of cool about that Pride Parade, you know, they closed off all of Kirkwood, and I get that it might have been hard to park for, you know, the previous public commenter, but it was a great time, and it was a great time for my friend who sold comics there, and he was wearing this big coat. He was able to get shade, and the way that he was able to get shade was, you know, and I mean, everybody, I think, has gone to Pride before. They have a bunch of booths, and those booths where they then, they have tents up outside. And also on Kirkwood Avenue that where, you know, it's closed off during the season. Some people like it, some people don't. What they use for the streets that are closed off is tents for shade when people go to restaurants, and I think that's great, that, you know, we get some outdoor fresh air and then we are able to get some shade as well. So I guess what I'm wondering is, why is it that the, not you guys, but the Board of the Park Commissioners, they voted to not allow tents in, I guess, within their jurisdiction with, within the parks? And it's sort of notorious because the Parks Board seems to think that, you know, they can, they can control everybody, you know? They suddenly are able to change the First Amendment, and they're, and they're able to say, oh, you know, you can't have tents now because, and, yeah?
Comments on Ordinance 2320? Because that's the-
What is 2320 about? Can we pause the clock?
Ordinance 2320 is on obstructing the right-of-way, and I think that may be what you intend to comment on, based on what you've said so far.
Right-of-way?
Parks Board decision is separate.
Okay. Were you wanting to comment on Ordinance 2320, or were you?
Commenting on an item that I believe is not on the agenda, which is about not allowing tents in public spaces.
That's actually on the agenda this evening, so-
It is about the Parks Board's policy, it was several weeks ago.
Because the Board of Parks Policy is-
That is not on the agenda.
What?
That is not on the agenda. The Parks Policy passed several weeks ago.
Thanks.
That's fine.
So point of order, I would like you guys to follow Robert's rules. Thanks. So to continue with my story, so I, and I actually heard that from a council member. I'm not going to refer to you guys by name because I don't think that's allowed, but, but yeah, I met some of you guys at Pride, and that's what I heard, is that the Board of Park Commissioners disallowed tents on public property. And I just think that that is a total double standard, considering you have a public space in Kirkwood Avenue where some places are allowed to have tents during the day, and other people that, I guess, I mean, you can put two and two together as to why it is that those other people can't have tents outside. They can't have tents outside. So what I hope we do is, I hope that we, in the year probably 2024, that we come up with an item and work with the mayor's office on this and have some cohesion that we didn't exactly have back in, back when we talked about these problems in 2021. And I really, and I really challenge you guys as council members, some of you will be here, others won't, to, you know, maybe, like, listen to some constituents, work with us, and then also, you know, not have what we had back in 2021, where we just, all we really got from, you know, 300 of us showing up to a Zoom meeting was a winter shelter for one year. And believe me, there's people that are dying out on the street still, and we definitely need a winter shelter. And, you know, what I've been told is that I, you know, we should respect the process and, you know, be civil and all this other stuff, but the irony of that is that the one time where we got something, which was a winter shelter, you know, we had to march in the mayor's house. So I would very much like, in the year of 2024, to, you know, just, you know, be productive and work with people. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goodlad. Do we have anyone else here in chambers? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, our last speaker is Susan Brackney.
I'm sorry, could you say the last name again?
Susan Brackney.
Ms. Brackney, I think I pronounced that correctly. Welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes, or excuse me, five minutes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Susan Brackney. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
I don't think this item is on your agenda. It regards the Bloomington Gateway Project at Miller Showers.
You're correct. That's not on our agenda.
Okay. So I was able to speak with the folks at the Board of Public Works. Some of these comments are a reprise of what I had to say to them, but not all of them. I understand that, excuse me, the money is earmarked and essentially spent. I regret on your behalf that you had maybe little say in specifically how the money would be, would be used in terms of the monolith piece that has been proposed. You know, I understand that you approved a series of bicentennial bonds for an entryway, and on paper, in a vague sense, that sounds okay. It is just very surprising that this thing has been in the works for five years and is said to reflect the ideas of lots of residents. I guess the city staff certainly weighed in, and the Bloomington Arts Council is said to have weighed in. There, it's 11 people, five of them appointed by the city council members, and six appointed by the mayor, and that's still not a lot of people. I'm very curious about what I, what I think is maybe a dearth of public input. I hope that there's a way to correct that, because I suspect that there are a lot of very, very intelligent people in Bloomington, and in particular at the university. I know there are some internationally renowned ornithologists. I've had the pleasure of interviewing them for some of my pieces that I've written. I know they would probably have some things to say that would be of use in terms of safety to migratory birds and bats and such. The thing that's special about Miller Showers is that it attracts wildlife. It's good for invertebrates. It's good for, you know, all the bugs and bees and things and waterfowl, and when you're attracting something on purpose, you're creating what's called a population source. And when you attract something on purpose and then put something in harm's way, put a thing in the way that could end up hurting them or killing them, that's actually a population sink. So I'm really concerned that we've created a thing to attract wildlife. I mean, that's not obviously its only purpose, but it is a benefit. And now we've got a 40-foot-high, potentially light-polluting, bird-disrupting monolith in the middle of stuff. So I don't know if that was, I'm not sure if that it's been completely thought through. I'm wondering, I'm wondering about a lot of things, how bright it's going to be, whether or not it really is going to be dark sky compliant, why a Bloomington firm wasn't used, why some of Bloomington's talented artists weren't involved, I mean, so many things. So I guess it's frustrating to me. With the source of funds being used and the specific amount being under a certain threshold, I looked into the law, and it doesn't really appear that there's any way to remonstrate or petition or anything. So that's pretty clever. I just really, really hope that you all will, if you can, push the pause button somehow and just try to get some more input from some of the folks around here that we're lucky to call neighbors. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Ms. Brackney. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else?
No, not that I see.
Okay. That'll conclude our first of two periods of public comments and take us to appointments to boards and commissions. Do any of the committees have appointments to make this evening? Seeing none, let's move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2321 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Ordinance 2321 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending Section 1532.150 to remove the four-hour limit on all accessible spaces. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approves changes to Bloomington Municipal Code, Section 1532.150, in order to include a time limit on accessible parking spaces only in parking lots or zones that impose time limits on non-accessible spaces, and to remove time limits on accessible parking spaces in parking lots or zones that do not otherwise impose time limits.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2321 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Brittingham tonight? Welcome.
Audrey Brittingham, Assistant City Attorney. I-
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2321 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed that carries? Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Ordinance 2321, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," regarding amending Section 1532-150 to remove the four-hour limit on all accessible spaces. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance approves changes to Bloomington Municipal Code, Section 1532-150, in order to include a time limit on accessible parking spaces only in parking lots or zones that impose time limits on non-accessible spaces, and to remove time limits on accessible parking spaces in parking lots or zones that do not otherwise impose time limits.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2321 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Brittingham tonight? Welcome.
Audrey Brittingham, Assistant City Attorney. I, this matter came to our attention. We realized that limiting parking spaces, accessible parking spaces downtown to four hours in areas where there's not otherwise a time limit for other parking spaces is essentially disparate treatment. And so, this ordinance change is an attempt to rectify that and to bring code further into compliance with the ADA.
That concludes, that's all?
That's all I have. If anyone has any questions?
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, let's go to public comment on ordinance 2321. Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom? And while you're doing that, could I see a show of hands in chambers of those who would like to offer comment on 2321?
There are members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak to this item. Please use the raise hand feature to let us know. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak. I do see one hand raised at the moment.
Okay. I'm not seeing anyone here in chambers, so let's go to Zoom.
First is Carol Canfield.
Ms. Canfield, welcome. Please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Carol Canfield. I just want to put my support behind this motion, and I do hope you'll vote for it. I appreciate the sensitivity to accessibility issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Or here in chambers? Okay, let's come back to council then for any additional, any questions or any final comments. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2321? It's Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
That passes eight zero. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2320 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2320, to amend Title 12 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled "Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers," regarding establishing a new section, 12.04.130, entitled "Obstructing the Right of Way." Excuse me. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2320 clarifies that placing obstructions within the public's right-of-way or otherwise obstructing the public's right-of-way is impermissible, and the ordinance defines the circumstances under which the right-of-way is considered to be obstructed.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2320 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Mr. Rooker with us?
Thank you, councilmembers. Michael Rooker, City Attorney. Ordinance 2320 proposes adding a new section to the municipal code titled "Obstructing the Right-of-Way." Ordinance 2320 is modeled on Indianapolis's ordinances and comes to the city council on the Board of Public Works' unanimous recommendation. In legal terms, the public right-of-way provides a right-of passage to all persons. Conceptually, public right-of-way exists to let all members of the community travel from one place to another. One of the core missions of local governments like Bloomington, going back for centuries into the mists of time, is to properly establish and then responsibly steward the public's right-of-way so that it remains open and accessible for public travel. Earlier this year, an obstruction was placed within the city's right-of-way. By itself, the appearance of an obstruction in the right-of-way was not remarkable. Obstructions aren't uncommon. Generally, obstructions are managed and addressed through a simple conversation between a staff member and the person responsible for the obstruction. Staff may even assist in identifying a possible solution to eliminate the obstruction. Generally, the obstruction gets removed, and then life goes on as normal. However, in this particular instance, the person responsible for the obstruction indicated that they simply would not remove the obstruction, and the blockage persisted for days. The public certainly noticed. That left the city in the difficult position of either allowing the obstruction to persist or asking law enforcement to remove the obstruction. Of course, because protecting the public right-of-way is a core mission, the city tried to coordinate with law enforcement to address the blockage. Staff reached out to law enforcement for help. However, law enforcement indicated that they could not address right-of-way obstructions absent a more specific ordinance defining when the right-of-way would be considered blocked. The city was specifically directed to Indianapolis's ordinance for guidance on a way to more clearly indicate to the public when and how the right-of-way would be considered blocked. Therefore, staff reviewed Indianapolis's ordinance and drafted and brought ordinance 2320 to the Board of Public Works for consideration, where it was unanimously recommended for approval by the city council. That's the basic genesis of ordinance 2320. But I think we should also talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts. Ordinance 2320 defines the circumstances under which a street, sidewalk, or public right-of-way is considered obstructed. The ordinance states that a sidewalk, street, or right-of-way is obstructed if, number one, more than half its width is blocked at any point; number two, the normal flow of pedestrians or vehicles is disrupted; number three, pedestrians are compelled to step onto the street or otherwise expose themselves to danger in order to pass around the blockage; or, number four, if it is rendered inaccessible to those protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. The four criteria in ordinance 2320 set a reasonable measure for when the right-of-way is considered obstructed. Note also that ordinance 2320 prioritizes education. The ordinance requires the city to give a member of the public an opportunity to adjust an obstruction so that it's compliant with ordinance 2320 as a first step in every single case. Staff recommends that the council pass ordinance 2320. I appreciate the council's consideration, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Rooker. Questions from council? Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Rooker. Based on your definition of obstruction or obstructed, does that apply to scooters as well that block sidewalks?
Yeah.
And will we approach that with the same fervor that we're talking about in this ordinance?
So, certainly, scooters are covered by a far more explicit regime, and I think the number of conversations that have happened related to shared-use motorized scooters are extensive. So, we've taken a lot of concrete measures just in the last couple of months to attempt to address those. You may have noticed downtown, there are now 68 corrals in place between Third and 12th and, I think, Morton and Indiana Street to address the, you know, to give a place for scooters to be placed specifically that's safe. This month, September, we sent a series of notices of violation to each of the scooter companies related to violations for illegally parked scooters. Lime received a notice of violation totaling $2,760, Bird totaling $2,220, Veo Ride totaling $870. We have three temporary part-time employees whose job it is is to go around to identify scooter violations and to remedy them. I think just a couple of weeks ago, during the Public Works budget presentation, Director Wason requested, and I think it was met with a positive reaction, the employment of two people full-time beginning in January to address scooter violations. So, we're taking concrete measures on that front. We wouldn't look to ordinance 2320 to set the standard for when a scooter is parked illegally. We have a far more specific ordinance that addresses that in Title IV.
Thank you. I brought that up because many constituents complain or do your reports or whatever, and so, they don't know. They don't know 2320 from whatever. So, that's what I was asking for. Also, and you gave us an example of an issue that I guess created this or supports this. Other than that incident, are we aware of anything else, and throughout the city? I just don't want to focus downtown. I know it's an issue, or public right-of-ways like Beeline, but let's look broader and what the effects that this ordinance could really, even maybe unintended, but could create. Did that make sense?
I think so. Is there a question there? I'm not sure what you're asking me, but.
I don't live downtown, so how is this going to apply all around town? And, well, go ahead. I have another one after that.
Well, the ordinance is going to apply to any right-of-way that the city's responsible for. So, certainly, you know, we see our right-of-ways more heavily utilized in places by pedestrians, by cyclists, by scooter users. So, it's going to be, there's going to be more implications when you block a place that's heavily traversed than when you have a blockage in a place that's not as heavily traversed. But, of course, if we discover somebody setting up a table in a remote area that blocks the sidewalk in contravention of this ordinance, if it were to be passed, we would take enforcement action just the same way there as we would downtown. And, of course, that's going to begin, as a first step, always with just a simple conversation, saying, "Look, you've got a blockage. There are some rules about this. Let's talk about a way that we can address this so that you can be relocating this obstruction in a lawful way."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Along the lines of Councilmember, excuse me. Along the lines of Councilmember Sims' questions. The scooter, the measures that the administration has taken in order to clear the right-of-way of parked scooters occurred five years after the scooters first appeared at Bloomington and more than, wow, four years since we actually made legislation to regulate their parking. So, I'm a little concerned about that being, about the enforcement of that rule. But my question is more about enforcement of scooter parking rules outside of downtown and how they have not been enforced, and they continue to block the sidewalks, and why that is not a higher priority than individuals who may be unhoused blocking sidewalks.
Sure. You know, I'm not here to try to address which blockage should be handled more aggressively. That's certainly not something that's relevant here. The idea is that we have to have the mechanisms in place when we identify a blockage, whatever its source may be, to address that situation. So, you know, some of these measures, hiring two full-time people whose exclusive job it will be to deal with scooters that are parked in a place they're not supposed to be parked in, we're going to see how that works and if that helps address the problem. Certainly, installing corrals, it's a very new thing. We're going to see if that works to help address the problem of scooters. We also intend to bring some measures to the city council in the coming months. I know that that's something that's been discussed with council leadership, I believe. We don't have a timeline for that right now, but also to talk about the way that the scooter rules exist in the city code. That's a conversation that's happened with the Board of Public Works as well. So, on the scooter front, we are taking significant steps to address it. If you're trying to ask me, you know, for an explanation why there may be a perception from some folks why we didn't address that sooner, I can't certainly offer an explanation on that to you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, so.
So, it's my understanding that the current legislation was prompted by one incident of somebody who refused to move. Is that correct, or were there multiple?
I wouldn't describe it that way. It was prompted by the discovery that, in the event we have somebody who puts, let's say, a table up blocking across the right-of-way, and somebody who has mobility problems, who's protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act, couldn't utilize a public facility like a sidewalk, we discovered that we would not be able to remove that obstruction, that it would be a challenge to get that obstruction off the sidewalk absent the voluntary assistance of the person who created the obstruction. So, the idea here is we have to have a mechanism in our code in that circumstance, which is admittedly rare, but nonetheless, very possible, and is something we have experienced. In that circumstance, we have to have a way to make the public right-of-way available for the public to use for its intended purpose, which is travel.
So, again, how often has it happened that somebody has blocked the sidewalk compared to the number of times scooters have blocked sidewalks outside the downtown area?
I certainly am not equipped to give you numbers on that, so.
Okay, let's scrap the comparison. How many times has this, like, in the last year, let's say, has this been a problem that a sidewalk has been blocked, and when asked, the person did not remove the blockage?
In the last year, I can speak only for myself what I'm aware of. I'm aware of a single incident where that happened. There may be other incidents where it happened that I'm not aware of, but I am aware of a single incident where it happened. That, of course, is quite concerning when we discover we don't have the tools to do our core mission, which is to make sure that when somebody is needing to get down the sidewalk to get where they're going, they simply can't do it without engaging in a dangerous practice. When we discover something like that, when it's related to a core mission like maintaining the public right-of-way, that's a situation where we immediately look to examine why we don't have the mechanisms in place. We look at what other communities have done, and so, we looked, of course, right away at what Indianapolis had done to address this exact situation, and we took steps to mirror that based on their experience.
Okay, I have more, but I can.
Okay. Councilmember Rallo, and then Councilmember Rosenbarger, and then Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rooker. My question is about the dilemma. So, I'll paint the dilemma here. So, the regulation provides that a sidewalk, street, or other public right-of-way will be considered obstructed under any of the following four scenarios, and half the width of the sidewalk, street, or other public right-of-way is blocked at any point. So, I'm interested in that specifically because the other point that is made in this list is that it is rendered inaccessible to people protected by the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, which I know we try to facilitate, as we did tonight, you know, the ability for people with disabilities to be able to use right-of-way. So, but, and it's been brought up in the past, that we have a problem weekly with trash and recycling containers that block sidewalks. It could be better or worse. Where I live, there's a wider sidewalk, so someone could theoretically get by with a wheelchair or walker, but many sidewalks are too narrow. So, my question to you is, does Indianapolis have a similar circumstance, and was that a consideration, and is there anything we can do to eliminate that conflict? Because it is a real conflict. It's a regular conflict. It may only appear for a few hours, but it is, it happens. I'll let you respond. Thank you.
And I want to make sure I'm understanding. You're asking specifically about trash containers, recycling containers that might be located in the right-of-way and cause an obstruction. Usually, or often, we're talking about sidewalks, although I've certainly seen them in roadways too.
Yeah, is there a remedy for that, for blocking the sidewalks?
You know, there absolutely, there absolutely is, right? So, we would have, this ordinance could potentially serve as a remedy in that situation if it were, if it were discovered. You can't quite hear me. Seems like I'm shouting, but, thank you, Councilmember Volin. Certainly, yes, this could potentially serve as a remedy for that sort of violation. I didn't specifically think about waste receptacles. You know, I think we need to talk about a couple of things. There is enforcement of code, which, of course, requires resources, right? There's no community, Indianapolis, Bloomington, anywhere. There's nowhere that maintains its right-of-way in perfect condition all the time, nor are we expected to. But we do our best. When we identify something that is causing an issue and the public, causing an issue for the public to utilize the right-of-way in the form that it's intended, we do our best to address it. When we see seating encroachments from restaurants downtown that have exceeded what they've been lawfully permitted to go into in the right-of-way, right? So, when somebody applies for a seating encroachment, that, of course, is extremely carefully reviewed to make sure that the remaining space in the right-of-way is available for the public to use, that it's ADA compliant, that it's compliant with width requirements. When somebody exceeds that, of course, we immediately let them know, and if they don't comply, we send them a notice of violation. When somebody has a drain pipe that's draining across an alley or the right-of-way inappropriately, we let them know about that too, because these are the sorts of things that we need to do as a municipality to make sure the right-of-way is open for the public to utilize. If a waste receptacle is an issue, we can deal with that as well. Now, I suspect that we do have a resource problem there, which is just a reality for all local government, which is that, you know, to the extent we have enforcement staff, they can only do so much, and they have to prioritize certain things. So, when you have a waste receptacle in a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of travel on it perhaps, right, sidewalk isn't widely utilized, that simply isn't going to be noticed. We're not going to get a call about that, the same way we might get a call about something downtown that is quite obvious to thousands of people every hour. So, I don't know if that helps answer the question, but.
Yes, it helps somewhat. Thank you.
My question's also centered around trash and recycling bins. I would like to say, part of this makes me very excited, because I have been asking for years that we keep our sidewalks clear of trash and recycling bins, because we've had multiple residents come in and comment on this. The council for. residents come in and comment on this. The Council for Community Accessibility has presented on this. It's like hundreds, if not thousands, of bins over time block sidewalks for people. And I mean, Mr. Rucker, you just said a neighborhood only gets so much foot traffic, but if we are talking about someone in a wheelchair, we are talking about what you said, they cannot safely get down a sidewalk. Like, that matters, no matter where they are. So, do we still do fiscal impact reports for our ordinances? Because in my mind, enforcing this is really important, and enforcing it, if it passes, enforcing it across all sidewalks evenly is very important, because discretion is not okay, I think, to have something enforced not equally, and maybe potentially targeting unhoused population when we wouldn't be targeting garbage bins on sidewalks. And so, is there a fiscal impact study? Because I would think, sort of what you were just talking about, too, we don't have the enforcement staff. I think we would need the enforcement staff with this ordinance before we could pass it.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenbarger. You know, sometimes I don't explain fully or explain in the correct way. I'm not as eloquent as I should be. I think I was trying more to address for Councilmember Rallo, you may notice that there are blockages that don't get addressed in areas that are more remote from downtown or farther away, and I think that's largely because we're simply not aware of them. I did not want to diminish the importance of making sure that sidewalks in every part of Bloomington are, in fact, kept open for their intended purpose for the public to travel, that we're protecting persons who have mobility challenges everywhere around town, and I think we do absolutely intend to do that. It's just that we get a lot more attention in certain places, and we're more readily made aware of obstructions in certain places, just because there are more eyeballs in certain parts of towns. So, I certainly agree with you that if we're talking about enforcing this ordinance, we should take obstructions seriously wherever they happen.
Thank you. But I guess my question, too, is about increased staff to enforce this.
You know, certainly, I don't mean to kick the question back to the city council, but when it comes to deciding how we're going to allocate the scarce resources that we have in a budget towards certain personnel, that's certainly the sort of conversation that happens between elected officials. This ordinance isn't going to address that sort of question tonight, but if there is a concern that we don't have adequate enforcement staff to make sure that we're keeping the right-of-way clear and available for the public to use it, that certainly is a conversation that should happen.
Okay, thank you. I have questions about penalties, but should I wait until...
Let's do that in round two. Okay? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. As I said, correct, there's no fiscal impact statement with accompanying this ordinance, is that right?
There is no fiscal impact statement accompanying this ordinance. I did speak briefly with Mr. Lucas regarding a fiscal impact statement. Our assessment was that there would be no significant fiscal impact associated with ordinance 2320.
Follow-up, if that's okay. So you mentioned, just a moment ago, the need to enforce, you know, these rules when obstructions are known. So, hypothetical, what would happen if a resident called Public Works and reported a sidewalk obstruction from a trash or recycling cart?
Yeah, that's a great question. The first step would be to attempt to reach out to somebody who'd created the obstruction and have them move it themselves. That would be step one. So, in the event -- sorry.
Go ahead.
So in the event we got in touch with somebody, there was a refusal to remove the obstruction, that's the point at which we would want to take action to remove the obstruction ourselves. That would be the next step, so.
Do we know which city staff would be responsible for calling to attempt to remedy the obstruction? Would it depend on the context, like a trash or recycling cart? Would it be Public Works sanitation staff?
In the past, it's been staff in the Public Works Administration Division, so...
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Volin.
Yes, thanks for the presentation. Is it not the policy of the city that when members of the public put trash cans out, that they are obligated to put it on the sidewalk?
I am not in a situation to speak about Title. I think that's in Title VI. I'm not sure. I haven't reviewed it. Councilmember Volin, I can certainly look at that and get back to you.
Well, I use the word "policy" not necessarily because it might not necessarily be in code, but, I mean, I recall, along with Councilmember Rosenbarger, being approached by Dave Takid, the Director of Innovation, to experiment with placement of carts in a different place, specifically on the street against the curb with a painted marker where the -- where they would put a painted marker where the trash can would go, but specifically to try putting it on the street. Whether it's de jure or de facto, if we already have a policy of obstructing the sidewalk on a regular basis, why would we even be contemplating this ordinance?
If that is in fact a policy, I am unaware of it, is what I would say. So, I'm not aware of a policy, if that's in fact a policy, that we would ask people to place a sidewalk or, excuse me, place a trash receptacle in such a way that it obstructs the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, but literally, that is the only way that I can put my trash bins out. My sidewalk is maybe four feet wide. It would literally violate -- it's violation of the ADA to put my bins out the way they do, but this is how I've been directed to do. I've been doing it, how most of us have been doing it, for years.
I certainly am not equipped to speak to your particular circumstances at your residence. I'm sorry about that. I can't address that with that level of specificity. I would think that if you think that continues to be an issue, that you might reach out to somebody in the sanitation department. I mean, I'm speaking to you almost as an individual now, Councilmember Volin, to figure out if there's a better solution. My initial reaction is certainly we should be able to or have to find a workaround so that you're not blocking somebody from accessing the sidewalk when you put your trash receptacle out. I do...
I appreciate that answer. I'll only point out that hundreds of residences in the neighborhood in the district I represent and the neighborhood where I live have exactly the same problem. I have another question briefly about the complaints received that led to this ordinance. You said that there was one example of a right-of-way obstruction in the past year. Can you describe the nature of that case?
I don't know a lot of details about that case. I know that it was downtown. I know that it was on East Kirkwood Avenue. I don't know a lot of details, and frankly, the details are largely irrelevant. The issue really was that when we called law enforcement and said, "We've got to be able to pick this, whatever is in the right-of-way up, move it out of the right-of-way, put it where we -- what we do in that circumstance is we store the item for 30 days. We notify the person who it belongs to that it's been stored, and we give them 30. Usually, it's longer than 30 days, but a minimum of 30 days to come and pick it up and put it somewhere else. We do that in all kinds of different scenarios where we have to pick up materials. But what we discovered is that we simply couldn't even do that. We simply had to live with the obstruction, and that's really what led to it. It's not about the number of complaints or the frequency of the complaints. It's that we discovered we have no mechanism to address that situation absent a municipal code change.
Thank you. I'll have other questions, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Additional round one questions? Okay, if not, I'll take a turn. Mr. Rucker, I know you've tried to get at this a couple times, and I'm still not clear, so please bear with me as I ask this question again. I'm still not clear on why our current regulations are inadequate. What do our current regulations not allow us to do or force us to do that is unacceptable?
Yeah, so I think I'm going to be trying to describe -- I want to make sure I'm understanding the question. You're asking, why don't current regulations in Title 12, there are various regulations that discuss the right-of-way, why isn't that satisfactory to law enforcement and to the prosecutor's office that obstructions can be removed? Is that right?
That was better than me. Good.
My basic understanding is that there is a preference that we more specifically state when the right-of-way will be considered obstructed and when it won't, so that members of the public, and I guess as well, city staff who's charged -- who are charged with enforcing the ordinance, so that they can understand when they should consider the right-of-way obstructed. I think, you know, this does that. This says, "Look, if you want some objective measures of when the right-of-way is obstructed, look at whether or not you're blocking half of the width of the sidewalk." Exactly right, yeah.
So those four points are key here.
Correct.
And as a follow-up, in the absence of this ordinance, let's say this ordinance does not pass tonight, how will obstructions be handled? Just as you have said, or...
I think we'll probably sit down, and we'll have a meeting to see what other options we may have that are available. Any of the other options that we might utilize just aren't as efficient. I'm going to be very direct about that. You know, going to court to attempt to get a court order is not -- it's just not going to be a quick process. That's going to be difficult. It's going to be fraught with the same issues. Is our local court's code specific enough that we can go to court and convince a judge to authorize us to pick up somebody's personal property and remove it? So, those sorts of things.
Okay. Thank you. Round two questions. Let's just start at the far end and work this way. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I want to follow up on the same basic line of questioning that Councilmember Scambleary just had. And I'm trying to recall with greater detail the events of late 2020 in and around Seminary Park, and I specifically recall somehow folks who were unsheltered or unhoused and living in the park more or less at that time, at some point, moving their belongings to the right-of-way, or what they perceived to be the right-of-way, sort of western edge of the park closer to College Avenue. And I seem to recall that being under the, you know, understanding that they -- their belongings could not be removed, or they could not be removed from that right-of-way, as opposed to a park which maybe had a policy about park hours or something like that. And I don't recall the exact specifics of how that got resolved, but I do recall that ultimately, folks had their belongings taken, some stored for a period of time, I think ultimately thrown away in many cases. And of course, folks eventually asked to leave under threat of arrest. But what enabled us legally to remove obstructions from the right-of-way in that scenario, since we didn't have that on code?
You know, I'm gonna -- I think you have me at a disadvantage, Councilmember Flaherty. I'm aware of what you're speaking about, the incidents of 2020, when there were some activities in Seminary Park, and I think there was another incident as well, where there were some encampments that were removed under city policy. I'm not sure how that interacted, how that -- how the right-of-way was involved in that. If it was, I just don't know, so I can't speak to that. What I can say is, our most recent interaction in a circumstance that is quite similar to what you're describing resulted in an answer that was, which was, "We can't remove those obstructions. You're out of luck." So, if there was a different answer in the past, I can't speak to that, unfortunately.
So you're saying, under current city code, or just current, I don't know, statutory guidance as well, I suppose, or other legal relevant, legally relevant provisions, in all cases, there is simply nothing, unless otherwise regulated, there's nothing the city can do to, short of getting a court order, to remove property or obstructions from the right-of-way? Is that right?
There are. So we should talk about, conceptually, there are lots of different aspects of the right-of-way. So, what we're talking about right now are obstructions. So, these are generally something we would think of as like a temporary obstruction or a non-permanent obstruction, right? We're also required, or we do thoroughly regulate commerce within the right-of-way, right? You can't set up a food truck without getting a permit. You can't set up a stand and sell your shirts without getting a permit, because the public right-of-way exists for the public, and so you can't conduct commerce there unless you have permission from the Board of Public Works, which is the board charged with protecting the public right-of-way, unless you get a permit or a license from them first. You know, we see sometimes permanent structures in the public right-of-way. So this is, somebody doesn't understand where their boundary line is, they put a fence in. That, again, would -- that's something that would necessitate legal action. What we're talking about here is something that's of a more temporary nature. Somebody sets up a table, a ping-pong table, something like that, completely blocks the public right-of-way so that the public can't use it, and we really need to address the situation immediately, which is somewhat different than some of the other circumstances we might encounter, where somebody puts a drainpipe, for example, into the public right-of-way, and it's not as immediate of a situation, where somebody exceeds the limits of their seating encroachment, for example.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to just talk about enforcement again, and just hypotheticals about, okay, about requiring, like you can clear the right-of-way immediately. So, if we're talking about a trash bin, and you ask someone to move it, they don't, you can move it, but, so that's what -- maybe what you'd do with a trash bin, I guess? Notify someone?
I mean, you know, this is, we're talking about enforcement in general, I think, maybe. Are you asking if we would do something more than simply move it aside, or...
Yes. I mean, I'm just seeing a very big difference between something like the enforcement of a trash bin versus a person, where part, I think, in the penalty section of our code, it says someone would be notified of a violation, but I guess I don't understand how you would also, like, mail a letter to a person without a home.
Sure. Are you asking that sort of question?
Yes, but you might then mail a letter to a person about a trash bin, and to me, that is just enforcement in different ways, and that's very confusing to me.
So I want to make sure. I'm so sorry. I want to make sure I understand the question. I'm sorry if I wasn't listening well. Are you -- you're asking maybe about the mechanism for notifying somebody that they've committed a municipal violation if they don't have a mailing address?
Yes, and I think just like, who gets to decide how this will get enforced on a particular trash bin or person?
Sure. So, you know, this is one of those things. Discretion ultimately rests with the enforcement official. This is one of those basic sort of things, where you have a certain amount of prosecutorial discretion. Of course, any municipal violation that's sent requires notification in the violation itself of how you can appeal that violation, and then there, of course, has to be an appeals process, otherwise it's not appropriate. So, some appeals go to administrative bodies, some go directly to the Monroe County Circuit Court. It depends on what regime is set out in local codes. So, for example, we do sometimes have to issue notices of violation or various municipal orders to people who do not have addresses. The typical mechanism for that is to simply notify law enforcement that there is a notice of violation that's outstanding, to provide them with a copy, and if they happen to encounter or know where to locate a person to serve that notice of violation, that's how they do it. I will freely admit that that process is much more difficult than when you have a mailing address for somebody and you can mail them a notice of violation, but that's the best that cities can do in that circumstance.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims.
Mr. Rucker, thank you again. Let's see if we can go around another way somehow. I think enforcement is, and I think many people brought up trash containers, and you mentioned a food truck without a license or improperly parked. I mentioned scooters early. And obviously, we're talking in many right-of-way issues, unhoused people with whatever, blocking, those sorts of things. In looking at this ordinance, obviously, I mean, it gives you, well, I'm asking a question, but I got to tell you, I am concerned about enforcement and us criminal, or giving the appearance of criminalizing that behavior. And when chamber, and again, I don't want to speak for the Chamber of Commerce. I don't want to speak for DBI or any other entity, but when they come up here and give comment, public comment about keeping right-of-way clean, I don't think they're talking about trash cans. I don't think they're talking about scooters. So that's my concern. If we send, if there's a violation, and that's one reason why I support it, bringing our community service staff and our social workers. Those are the type of things that can be addressed with them without law enforcement. And it's pretty clear that we give them the right to move it, the obstruction. If they don't, we can move the obstruction. The city has the ability to pursue arrests for trespassing. You see how specific that is? And that's what concerns me. We're not going to do that with my neighbors, with the trash being there. I mean, we're just not going to do that. So, I guess that's my real concern. So one of my colleagues would normally say, "What say you?" But I'm not going to do that. And, but I got to turn this into a question, or I'll get admonished. Enforcement in that particular case, how often do you anticipate that a violation of right-of-way obstruction may or may not turn into arrest? And I know that's hard to predict. I understand that, but, and only police can arrest. That's something else that bothers me. Only police can arrest. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Just try, try. I mean, I don't know. I'm a little confused with all this.
Yeah, I can do my best to address all of that. I, I don't know, I'll do my, there's a lot there. So, the, the first thing you said is, sort of, there is a concern potentially that it feels like by saying if you put an obstruction in the right-of-way, we'd like to have a mechanism to no longer have that right-of-way obstruction, be that this is considered to be somehow criminalizing status. It's not at all what this is intended to do. There's nothing like that. The goal here is to make sure that the right-of-way may, it's that it stays open so that the public can utilize it, and that's it. To the extent, when we look at this, I mean, the, the first step is always education, right? So we want to sit down and talk with somebody to figure out the best way to make sure the right-of-way obstruction isn't there, or if there's going to be something in the right-of-way, that it is in the right-of-way in such a way that it doesn't violate one of these four criteria. That's, that's goal number one. So I just want to be completely clear about that. Sort of the second half of that was, what's the likelihood of an arrest for criminal trespass in this situation? I, I cannot speak for law enforcement or for the prosecutor's office. The city has, we have no interest whatsoever in putting somebody in handcuffs. That's totally, that's useless. It's not a useful thing. What we want to be able to do is take whatever item is preventing a person from moving down the sidewalk and get it out of the sidewalk. That's the goal here. And when we discovered we didn't have a mechanism for doing that, that's when we looked around to see what other cities were doing to ensure that they had a mechanism for that. And that's, that's why we modeled this on what Indianapolis does to, to protect the use of the right-of-way.
Okay. As part of that model, providing or giving individuals, let's talk individuals here, access to, let's say we're having a mental health-ish episode or some substance episode. So what happens in, or do we anticipate happening in that particular case? And, and again, I've mentioned the social workers and the community service staff. But you see what I'm saying, and a lot of this, I think, may be unintended consequences, but will definitely lead to arrest, as I see. And, and that's just what we're speaking. I think there's some other things, but what do you think about that? Other mechanisms for those that may involve more than just a behavioral issue?
Those are absolutely conversations that should be had. We should discuss the way that we deal with all of the issues that may or may not underpin unhoused status, and those are enumerable. And we should think about those, those core fundamental issues and address them. If you want sort of to revisit the city's general policies on persons who are experiencing homelessness, what resources are available in the community for persons who are experiencing homelessness, I, I will tell you, I'm sad to admit that I am probably not the person you want to talk to about that. There are a dozen people or more here at City Hall who are far more familiar with and, and able to tell you what resources are available and how we would address situations, particular situations on a case-by-case basis. I know that we have a standing weekly meeting with various community service providers, it's not a meeting that I am personally in, to talk about the sorts of issues that they are seeing from members of, of the unhoused community, and to try to work with them to address those issues as they come up. But unfortunately, if we want to talk really broadly about what we're doing in Bloomington to address persons experiencing homelessness, I, I think it's, that's going to be a little bit beyond the scope of ordinance 2320. And I'm sorry to disappoint you if that's the case, but...
No, you're fine. I just wish some of those 12 people you mentioned, at least one of them were here tonight. That would be helpful. But thank you very much.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rollup.
Yes, Mr. Rucker. Do you know that the, the portion of the Indianapolis Marion County Code that has served as a guideline for defining obstruction of public right-of-way is in their Article V protections for the homeless?
I was aware of that, yes.
So, can you understand why some of us may be concerned that this ordinance here in Bloomington is coming forward because of unhoused, that the focus is on unhoused people in our community?
I can absolutely understand why that would, I can understand why that is the focus of it. I think that makes perfect sense. And I would say, if I might, in response to that as well, I think that's another aspect of the ordinance that should be taken into account, that the ordinance not only provides a guide on when the right-of-way is considered obstructed, but it also provides guidance on when the right-of-way isn't considered obstructed, when you are lawfully located in the right-of-way, when, when we can't take action against you and don't want to, frankly, have no interest in it. So, so, and I think in some sense, that's why you find the Indianapolis ordinance within a chapter of the Marion County, Indianapolis Marion County Municipal Code that's titled "Protections for the Homeless," because on some level, it does say, you know, "We are only going to consider the right-of-way obstructed in these instances."
Are you, can you remind me, does Bloomington have a section of code that protects the rights of the homeless?
They do not have any corollary to the Indianapolis Marion County Code. We do not have a chapter that's titled "Protections for the Homeless." Or if we do, I'm not aware of it, and I will say I'm, this time, I can't say there are a dozen people other than me in City Hall who, who are more aware of the municipal code, so.
I guess that's all. Councilmember Rollup.
Yes, this, sorry. So this ordinance would prohibit storing personal property in the right-of-way. Could you expound on this, what the storing consists of? It implies some time elapsing, some time period. What's, do you have a definition for storage?
Yeah, I think that it's really the, the idea is intent to remain. So if somebody has an item that's temporarily in the right-of-way, and it's going to be there for a reasonably short amount of time, that wouldn't be anything, that's, that wouldn't be storing materials in the right-of-way. But if somebody notices that there appears to be something in the right-of-way that shouldn't be there, there's a conversation, and you know, the, the conversation, it becomes clear through the conversation that, yeah, I'm not going to be moving this, and I'm not going to move it, I'm not going to move this table out of the way, or this, whatever it might be, for the next 10, 12 hours, that's going to be storage at that point, right?
Okay. Well, let me give a hypothetical then. So, I'm on the sidewalk, and I'm there for hours, but I'm not, I'm not blocking, half the sidewalk is open, so I'm in compliance, and I have personal belongings. Is that storage? Or is that, or does storage consist of leaving my belongings there to retrieve later? What, what is, could you elucidate that?
It's, it's going to be really difficult to imagine hypotheticals like that, and it's really going to depend on a case-by-case situation. Obviously, if you have a very de minimis, small amount of materials that we're talking about, that's not going to implicate anything. If it's a more significant amount of materials, obviously, you know, that's something that somebody might ask you about. So, so the amount of personal belongings that are present may, may be relevant, the size of something you put up...
But it doesn't say that. It just says, it, it, it addresses half the width, width of the sidewalk. So it seems you're in compliance if you're not blocking that sidewalk. Now, it doesn't say anything about the volume of belongings that I have. I could have a backpack, I could have a tent, a backpack, groceries, I don't know. You know, what, I need some guidance in terms of what storage consists of, both temporally and, and if it is volume, then could you bring us into some sort of understanding of what that volume consists of?
So I'm sorry, I think I was sort of answering your question from a hypothetical enforcement perspective, more than from a, what is a technical violation of the statute? And we're going to just go back and look at the four criteria in, in that circumstance, regardless of the volume of the item that's blocking the right-of-way. If it's blocking more than half of it, if we're noticing that pedestrians are backing up, or bicyclists can't get through, that's the sort of thing that's immediately, we're going to, we're going to have a conversation about how we might be able to adjust your, your situation in the right-of-way, the items in the right-of-way, and, and in a way that doesn't create that issue anymore. I do also want to be clear, and I don't think you were suggesting this, but maybe just for everybody, we're not talking about a person. This is not a loitering statute. We don't have a loitering statute. We have no interest in a loitering statute, the history behind, or excuse me, ordinance, the history behind loitering ordinances, right, as, as sort of a pretextual mechanism to harass certain community members, is really not anything we've ever been interested in, and we've never had a loitering ordinance, to my knowledge. So, we're not talking about human beings being in the right-of-way, we're talking about physical items, so.
Round two. Councilmember Sandberg, then Councilmember Volan.
Thank you. I think what we're grappling with here is the humanity of how this will be handled and the mechanisms. We're hearing a lot of questions of what if, and how's this going to be handled, and we can't come up with specifics. And so, I'm almost feeling like this isn't quite ready for primetime, and this is where I miss the committee of the whole, because as more people are asking questions and posing hypotheticals, and we're delving into the humanity of, we're talking about unhoused individuals. And I keep thinking, as I'm reflecting on the mechanism, as how we humanely and responsibly and in a, in a good fashion handle this, and I keep coming back to the mechanisms of how do we engage more with the social service community? Because I don't necessarily want law enforcement to have to get drawn into this, because this opens up a whole new can of worms. But it seems to me, in your opening presentation, you were saying that it is not our intent to arrest, we're not trying to throw people in jail, we want to educate people that you've blocked a passageway so that the rest of the public can't use it. Would you please move? And if they're not responding to that polite request to remove the blockage from the public right-of-way, there needs to be some mechanism or some law or some ordinance to be able to address that. But I don't think we're being, we're, we're clear on how that's going to be addressed. And I think members of the public that have communicated with us about this, as well as some of the good questions from my colleagues, we're not quite sure. Is, is it possible for us to do more work on this before it comes back, or maybe involve more people to answer some of these questions that you're, it's not in your wheelhouse to answer? Is that a possibility for us to do more work on this before we, we actually vote on something that may not be quite as baked as we would want it to be?
We always encourage curiosity, interactions, good ideas. So to the extent the council has amendments they want to, they want to consider, discuss, certainly we would encourage the proposal of, of those sorts of items. We always do. Councilmember Sandberg, so I think there's of course lots of wisdom in that. If you want to have a further understanding from additional city staff about their thoughts on the ordinance, I certainly would encourage probably council leadership to talk, to talk at their regular meetings with the mayor's office about sort of individuals they might be interested in asking questions to, whether that's in written form, offline, or sort of in a presentation. So certainly I would encourage those sorts of things, absolutely, if that's the question.
Kind of clarify my, my, what I'm trying to get at is, it seems like if some, probably nine times out of 10, if someone is asked to remove an obstruction from a public right, they will. "Oh, my bad, I'm so sorry, yes, I'll, I'll move it." This seems to be based on an incident where someone refused. You couldn't get them to move, they just sat there and wouldn't respond. And for whatever reason, could be a mental illness, it could be any number of things. And that's when you would call in a social service agency that maybe had a relationship with that person to help persuade that person to move, or help them with storage, or whatever is needed to have a humane outcome to that one out of 10 that refuses to move their, their personal belongings out of a right-of-way. So that's why I'm saying, could we have more discussion with social service providers as to how we as a city can respond to these kinds of conflicts in a humane and responsible manner that doesn't cause more community conflict?
Yeah, I think that that makes perfect sense to the extent there's a question there, so I would certainly agree with it.
It really kind of is, because I'm kind of perplexed as to how I'm going to vote tonight. I feel I'm not ready to, to...
I, I appreciate that comment. The only thing I would say is, there are always going to be those rare, and I think nine out of 10 is probably too low, I think it's probably 49 out of 50, 99 out of 100. But there are always going to be those really unfortunate, and nobody likes doing this. This is, this is the worst moment, when you discover that you really do have to use the authority that you've been given to make sure you can keep a sidewalk open for somebody with a wheelchair to pass over it. We never want to use the most extreme measure, but there are those rare occasions where we simply have to do it. We never want to send a fine letter to somebody. We always try to educate first. But sometimes you just are going to have people who, who for whatever reason are going to continue to insist on a situation where you have to use the strongest measures, so...
Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I can think of another, I mean, I'm interested by this whereas clause in the ordinance. Whereas individuals and entities frustrate, impede, and/or exclude the general public from using the right-of-way when they camp upon, store personal property upon, or place obstructions within the public's right-of-way, I'm thinking now of a construction company building a building. We've had several cases where an enraged member of the public comes in and says to us, they had an obligation to put a substitute sidewalk up because they're occupying the sidewalk with their equipment, their, what is it again? Their personal property or their obstructions that they're camping with. And the, the requirement to keep that sidewalk open with Jersey Bears and the like is simply not complied with, and the city just doesn't bother. And this particular member of the public has, has interrogated the engineering department, the public works department, why isn't this being done? How should I feel about this ordinance, knowing that for three to six months at a time, a construction company will build a building and occupy an entire block of sidewalk with no, with impunity? And yet, we're sitting here talking about this?
So, I, I would probably describe things a little bit differently than that. So, so when, and maybe we should go back from my perspective of a couple of steps, and then if you feel free to interject at any point. When, so when somebody is doing a construction project, and they're going to utilize part of the public's right-of-way, or they're going to excavate part of the public's right-of-way as part of that construction project, we have a pretty well-built-out system in the municipal code and in the engineering department for how you request a permit in that situation. One of the things that's of course required is a maintenance of traffic plan, which is something that, that you submit when you request a permit, that describes how the right-of-way is going to be maintained for pedestrians, for vehicles, while you're using part of the right-of-way. Oftentimes, that's, the word negotiated would be wrong, but there is a back-and-forth exchange between municipal officials and a company about what that's going to look like. And then at the end of the day, it's the company's responsibility for appropriately implementing that plan. If you're, if you want me to tell you that every company always follows the plan to a T in every case, I absolutely am not going to tell you that. We have discovered violations, we've sent notices of violations. There are certainly, sometimes we don't notice violations, again, because there are limitations on what we can notice and what we can enforce. But in circumstances like that, there is absolutely a system for making sure that roads and sidewalks remain open for the public to use despite construction activity happening. And if, if we are noticing situations where that's inadequate, where a company isn't living up to its end of the bargain, we do want to know about that so we can hold them to what they're supposed to do.
Well, I'm afraid that my concern is a bit more focused. It's not about the fact that they blocked the right-of-way at all, it's that when they submitted a traffic plan requiring that there be a sidewalk provided, and they neglect it or fail to do it, and the city neglects or fails to enforce it, it makes me question why we're spending this much time on a single case, on something that came up because of a single case, when you say 99 times out of 100 people just moved the obstruction, much more temporary than this. I mean, this is a, a matter of administrative priorities. In other words, give me confidence that the administration will as enthusiastically enforce traffic plans admitted by construction companies as they will this. Can the police not also police that law?
The, the police don't get involved in maintenance of traffic plans. That's, what happens in that circumstance is a, is a letter is sent to the company with a fine attached to it, usually a hefty fine. And if you've been, you can go back, I mean, we've seen these fines get issued, we've seen them appealed to the Board of Public Works. So this is something that we do, that staff does, not on an irregular basis when there is a violation like this. We will go ahead and send letters for violations by companies when they utilize the right-of-way inappropriately in lots of different circumstances. So I, I guess I would, I'm not sure what you're looking for in terms of a commitment, but I, I might just disagree with you on some level, Councilmember Volan, about our sincerity in terms of making sure that the right-of-way is appropriately maintained.
I mean, I'm not saying the efficient administration is insincere, I'm simply saying that they're in- inconsistent. And this, this whereas clause says, entities frustrating, impeding, and/or excluding the general public from using the right of way. How is it materially different because they applied for a permit that they failed to live up to? I mean, the enforcement mechanism is not as immediate as what you're recommending here.
The enforcement mechanism is absolutely immediate. Sometimes we'll issue a stop work order in a situation like that. So we do, we do have, we do take steps when we see egregious violations or serious problems to address those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've had two rounds of questions. So let's go to the public for comment at this point. While Mr. Lucas extends our invitation on Zoom, please, if you would, can I have a show of hands here in council as to how many would like to offer comment? Great, thank you. Okay. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, if there are members of the public that would like to speak to this item joining us via Zoom, please indicate your desire to speak by using the raise hand feature. You can find that under your control bar by clicking on the reactions tab or the more tab. And if you can't locate that, please send the meeting host a chat. I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay. Still one? Now two. All right. Let's plan on two minutes per speaker. We have a lot of people that we want to give a chance to tonight. So if you would, if you're in chambers, if you want to approach and start queuing up at the podium, I would appreciate that. And if you would, let's start here in chambers. If you would please introduce yourself, share your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Polly Tyrocone. Been in Bloomington about 10 years. So I, like many, are, I'm sensitive to the need for unfettered access to all of our public spaces. It's important to remember that public, critical component of what defines public is that it is non-exclusionary. And I think that this legislation, as it is written, is in fact exclusionary. I think it fails to provide adequate enforcement measures and clearly define them. It opens up additional policing of already vulnerable people without necessarily giving them an opportunity to access local resources. I think the legislation as is, is short-sighted to the nuance of the issue at hand. I think the issue is legitimate, and I think it bears some amount of response. But I think that, that there are resources out there from cities doing a better job than Indianapolis, frankly. And we as a city ought to study those resources and create a more informed potential solution to the issue that is, that we seek to address. And really, what this legislation needs is a clear nexus to services being offered and ensured to resolve obstructions and not simply punitive measures, again, to people who are already the most vulnerable among us. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Zoom while the next person signs in.
First on Zoom, we have Talisha Kopic.
Ms. Kopic, welcome. If you would confirm your name for the record, please, and then you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. This is Talisha Kopic. I'm with Downtown Bloomington, Inc. We're in favor of this ordinance and appreciate the city bringing it forward. We've got a very active downtown, and it's important to keep paths open for walkability of all ages and ADA accessibility. Pop-up obstructions on sidewalks can get out of control pretty quickly and affect the balance of multiple uses in the downtown area. You know, there's a whole group of people trying to keep things clean and picked up. And, you know, frankly, it gets very frustrating and a little bit overwhelming. And it, so anyway, all of this kind of working together for a clean and safe and maintained downtown is, is very important. And I appreciate your consideration of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kopic. Let's come here in chambers next.
Hi, my name is Tim Dwyer. I urge council to vote against this ordinance as written. I'm very concerned, as somebody who is downtown every day of the week, that the motivation for this is really about stemming the aesthetic issues of homelessness. Some of the commentary from the public, and frankly, harmful things I hear just walking down the street, people complaining about unhoused people being in public space is very concerning. And I, I think that is a pretty clear focus of where the enforcement of this ordinance would go. This ordinance does not pretend to solve homelessness, and it certainly wouldn't. There are many other things that we could do, whether that be expanding social services that are overwhelmed as is, or expanding housing opportunities. That would do a much better job of helping get people off of the streets and prevent them from obstructing the public space. I'm not sure, it was not widely reported, but about a week ago, The Herald Times noted that a woman who is suffering from experiencing homelessness was found dead in the woods on the south side of Bloomington in a tent in one of these encampments that have become far too common. I think that is a very extreme, but a tragic example of what happens when we have a, a public focus on pushing people experiencing homeless out of sight and out of mind. And I'm very concerned that this kind of legislation furthers that goal to just push people out of space. Everyone has a right to the public space, even those experiencing homelessness. And we should do a much better job of seeking to provide them resources rather than this punishment system should they occupy too much of the space. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom?
Yes, next on Zoom is B E D C.
Welcome, if you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. I wanted to speak in support for this legislation as public rights of way of safety and accessibility are important. At the same time, this should be in addition to other resources that we support in our community for individuals that are facing challenges, whether they're unhoused or have mental health or substance abuse challenges. I've spoken earlier at other meetings about the Economic Vitality Project, which is an initiative to support vibrancy across our community, such that it is a great community for everyone. Other aspects of the initiative provide support for housing development, employment growth with wraparound services to ensure individuals can access communities, opportunities. But importantly, it also means support for health and social services to ensure things like homelessness are rare, brief, and non-repeating. So we support this legislation, but also support a holistic approach to ensuring a vibrant community for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Here in chambers?
Hello.
Could you stand a little closer to the microphone, please?
Apologies.
And there's one up on the podium as well.
This one?
Either one is.
So I'm Nick Angelos. I'm a member of Help Ourselves Mutual Aid, a community-based organization that serves the unhoused community at Seminary Park three times a week. And we hold bi-weekly meetings with the unhoused community. In our last meeting, we talked to several members who are like respected in the community. And we asked them their thoughts about the recent tent ban and also continued bans. They themselves realized that there is a problem. They think that we have a problem in Bloomington. Everybody knows we have a problem with addressing the needs of our unhoused community. And what I would like to see is more a solution-oriented approach to this. Because at the moment, this ordinance really seems like procrastination of the problem. I'm a former student. I know what procrastination looks like. One possible solution measure that has been addressed by members of the community is that if they realize that having their tents in a park would prohibit the whole Bloomington community from appreciating a public park, like if families would not feel comfortable going there, they realize that is a problem. They suggested, why don't we have a separate public space for members of the unhoused community to set up their tents? We have plenty of vacant lots in town. We have plenty of resources to make this happen. I just don't think we've seen the will in the government so far. So I would just like to thank all the members of the council for their considerate questions and comments today. And I look forward to working together to find a solution to this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Angelos. Next on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, let's go here in chambers. Who would be, who would like to speak next?
Hold on, let me sign it.
And could you pull the microphone down, please?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm Sova, I'm also a member of Help Ourselves.
And can you state your full name, please?
I'm Sova Laura, I'm also a member of Help Ourselves. I first have discovered that in recognition, you committed to the work necessary for more adequate movement. Isn't this bill a little counterproductive to discriminate? I would like to urge you to look at some spill as it is. Why is this bill mainly trash cans, scooters, tanks, and people? People are not trash cans. Doesn't it seem a little silly to bring this bill as a community issue and immediately separate unhoused people from the community and group them with trash cans? Most members of the community would, in all these circumstances, not, not be arrested for being in a community park. And I would also like to take this moment to, the first person from Help Ourselves, talk to him about how I would also advocate for a resolution, running to the approach. I would now like to continue to my second point about how one of the arguments that was added a lot in this bill was that this is necessary to protect people with disabilities. If this is such a priority, why was one of the first employees heard about this meeting about lack of accessible parking? Why are a lot of the sidewalks here that are trying to be obstructed, not accessible to people with disabilities? So many people who are unhoused have disabilities. It feels like this is a weak sticker to defend the bill that was based on a single event. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome. After you sign in, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hi, so I'm also, my name is Abhinav Khattaru. I'm also from Help Ourselves Bloomington. I just want to say that we should be very keen in not falling into the trap that the initial proposer has set, which is that it's basically a problem where there's stuff on the sidewalk, and we just need to move it. There's stuff on the right of way, and we need to move it. It's that simple of an issue. But I can also provide as simple of a solution, which is that there are unhoused people, we should just give them houses, right? So it's a very, very one-dimensional kind of perspective that the initial proposer has set before us. And it lacks much nuance. And as the initial proposer has said themselves, they're more focused on tables, ping pong tables, and a lot of other various objects rather than people. While this is, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Sims have stated, is very much a problem about housing and targeting the unhoused community. Other than that, I reflect all the statements that previous Help Ourselves members have made up on this podium. And thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Welcome. After you sign in, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kamal Perdana. I'm also with Help Ourselves Bloomington. Sorry, there's a lot of us. But my comment mostly talks about how, in this bill, there's, there's a lot of hypocrisy, and it's very concerning. And I mean, we've, we've talked a lot already about how this bill targets the unhoused community. And we've also talked about how, you know, other sort of bodies, agents in the city can, you know, obstruct public right of way with, you know, impunity, with much less repercussion. I mean, you know, like, as we've talked about, like, construction companies, apartment companies, or real estate companies, they can set up and occupy sidewalks for months at a time. And sure, I mean, if they overstep their permit, they get a fine. But, I mean, the response in this bill, if cops or law enforcement are called on an unhoused person, it's not a fine that they're getting. I mean, it could be violence, it could be escalation, it could be life or death for these people. And so, you know, there's, there's a really strong double standard here where the public, public property is, is open for companies, for businesses, but not for unhoused people, not for poor people. And I just think that's not right. And so, you know, I really think, as, as with previous speakers have talked about, we need to focus on a solutions-based approach rather than a punitive approach to the unhoused community, you know? We need affordable or free housing. We need public places where unhoused people are not criminalized, where they can store their belongings and not have them at risk of being appropriated by the city. Yeah, that's all I have to say. I urge a no vote on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, just to check in, do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. And welcome, if you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Josh Montag. I want to speak in opposition of this resolution. Last month, the Bloomington Board of Parks Commissioners unanimously banned unhoused people from camping in public parks. Now this resolution is wanting to ban them from sidewalks, streets, and right of ways. That does nothing to mitigate the problem. This is just perpetuating the situation. Instead of doing something to curb the unhoused population and help them get back on their feet, instead, this resolution decides to make their lives more difficult. I hope you think when you cast your vote, that voting yes will only be kicking them down when they're already down. The job of the local government is to make the lives of citizens better. That means all citizens. Tonight, we've seen it's clear that you should vote no on this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Next here in chambers?
Good evening, Madam President. This is Chris Terangji from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. This is a very complex issue, and I think we, we want the accessibility to be addressed. But I think this, at this time, needs to be tabled. We need to come together with some solutions that I think are going to work for all parties. I just don't think, after hearing the discourse tonight, that we're there yet. So my recommendation would be to table the matter and we come up with it another time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Here in chambers, welcome. If you would, please sign in, share your name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes. Mr. Lucas, just checking in. Okay.
See one, one taker on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, we'll come back to that in a minute. Go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sydney Zulik. Thank you all for being here. A lot of really great discussion I've heard from both council members on Zoom and in person. I believe that as a city, we really should be focusing on two things when it comes to the homelessness population, and that's reduction of harm and preservation of dignity. And this bill does neither of those things. So I am politely requesting that you vote no on this bill. I did hear some discussion about how this ordinance does not necessarily target people. Unfortunately, the stuff that house, people experiencing homelessness carry with them is always with them because they don't have anywhere to store their things. And so because of that, it, this ordinance indiscriminately targets people experiencing homelessness because where they go, their stuff goes. And so it's really not fair to say that this bill doesn't target people, because it definitely does, except it targets exclusively people who are experiencing houselessness. This is not, this is not just something that is going to be trash cans or scooters. And it's honestly kind of insulting that that's what we're talking about when these are people. And they have a very small limitation of stuff that they're allowed to carry with them. Every single one of us has way more than one shopping cart. I could probably fill up seven. And I know that everyone in this room probably feels very similarly. So I just encourage you to vote with compassion. And remember that people experiencing homelessness are also your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, let's go to Zoom.
Yes, on Zoom, we have Jamie.
Hello, if you would, please state your full name for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Okay. My name is, uh, thank you. My name is Jamie Shaw. I'd like to somewhat agree with some of the things that have been mentioned by what it seems to be two sides of this issue. I would like to see solutions, a solution-based resolution as well. I'm still thinking that Bloomington, even though I know there's a lot of things behind it that would need to happen. it that would need to happen, a sanctioned homeless encampment that would have 24-hour security, strict rules, because I think that's needed for people to remain safe from themselves as well as towards others in that encampment, as well as access to social services. This seems to be an ideal situation to be able to help people find the social services that they would need as well as to remain safe. I don't agree with all of the things that they should, they could take up space if they have a tent on a sidewalk that's near businesses that harms our community, because I really don't know if I had a three-year-old walking by, if somebody's shooting up or doing something else that I would not want my young child to be around. I think this is time to table it for now, and hopefully that people also start to think about when someone is without a house, a permanent structure, or more permanent structure, that they do have some personal responsibility, and they do not need to have that tent in an area that is blocking a sidewalk or near a business. That is a personal choice that they've made to place it in that area. If it's someplace else, it's, I'm sorry, thank you.
Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Not that I see right now.
And is there anyone else here in chambers who would like to speak? Seeing none, let's come back to council then for questions? Additional questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I actually had a comment, I was gonna
Let's do questions first.
Discuss a motion to table, but, yes, questions.
Questions, Councilmember Flaherty, and then Rosenberg.
Thank you. Mr. Rucker, yeah, this is for you. I just did want to follow up on one of the questions I asked earlier. Reading now from a Herald-Dimes headline from January 10th, 2021. Sometime today, any remaining tents and other personal belongings of people experiencing homelessness who have been living in and around Seminary Park will be hauled away. The city posted a sign in the park last week warning people staying in the park, they must find another place to stay. A city ordinance prohibits overnight camping and the presence of people in city parks from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM daily. In addition, the sign says that on or about January 11th, I'm quoting now, quote, "On or about January 11th, 2021, any and all personal property remaining in the public rights-of-way along South College Avenue and South Walnut Street must be removed," end quote. It advises people to find another place to live, and lists local overnight shelters and social service agencies that provide resources for the homeless. So just bringing us up to speed on, I believe, what the action the city took and the specific words they used with regard to removing property from the public right-of-way in the past, and wondering what your response is to that, vis-à-vis our conversation earlier. Was a court order obtained for that, are you aware?
I would first start by saying I'm extremely impressed with your memory, Councilmember Flaherty, and the details that you remembered that incident with. No court order was obtained in that case, I can say that affirmatively. What has changed in the interim since the, what you've just read about what happened, and I think you said in July of 2021? January 2021. And this past summer, I can't tell you that, so I cannot shed light on that. I can affirmatively tell you that the response we received was materially different than what you described in the article you just read.
And you, the response from whom? The prosecutor's office, or?
And law enforcement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. I would like to follow up on that question, on Councilmember Flaherty's question. If we didn't have a law in place at that time to remove items from the right-of-way, is what the city did on January 10th illegal? Was it illegal?
I am, I'm certainly not in any position to comment on that based on the information at my disposal.
Okay. But then I wanted to just touch on some things from public comment. Something this ordinance doesn't have, I think, is what happens to the items that would be cleared? Do you know what would happen to them?
Yes, we have talked about that extensively. So we have a policy, like a lot of municipalities, about what we do when we clear an encampment like a situation that Councilmember Flaherty just talked about. There are requirements about posting notice, at least 72 hours in advance, so people are well aware of when it's going to happen. We require that we ascertain that there are absolutely beds available in local shelters for the number of persons who are located in a particular encampment, so they have an alternative place to go when the encampment is no longer up. And we also have a policy on their belongings, which is that we will store any belongings for at a minimum of 30 days in a safe and secure location where they can be retrieved. Now, we have discovered, and I think either you or Councilmember Flaherty mentioned this, there are times when people simply don't come and pick those belongings up, and there's nothing we can do after that, after a certain amount of time passes.
Clarify, that's not in this ordinance, that's in a different city policy?
It is, it's in a policy on the closure of encampments. So, but we follow that as a general rule, the 30-day rule, so we would follow that exact same rule here.
Okay, it seems like it would need to be added, I think, to this, just for clarification, right?
Are you saying, you think it might make sense to add it textually to this? I just couldn't hear very well.
Yes, sorry, yes.
I actually think that's a great idea, if that were an amendment that were proposed, I do believe we could support that.
Okay. And then another amendment that I would potentially propose here, although I prefer to vote no on this if we vote, what about an amendment that says this does not apply to human beings, actually?
That it only applies to things that aren't a lot, I know, I'm trying to think of, like, that it applies to, I want to say chattel almost, but I don't know what the right word is, that's where my legal brain goes, but you're talking about not human beings, I guess, just, I think that would
Yes, I mean, you mentioned that it doesn't apply to humans, but it doesn't really, I don't think it makes that clear.
We have absolutely no intent of this applying to human beings, or this serving as something like a loitering ordinance, so yes, I think we could certainly support an amendment like that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, and I apologize, this is a follow-up question on something I heard you say as I was walking out the room to use the bathroom, so sorry about that if I did not get the full context. But did I hear you say that, that the policy in the City of Bloomington is to not clear an encampment unless there's space in shelters locally?
Correct, yes. One thing we do before we clear an encampment is we check with our social service partners to make sure that there are adequate beds available for persons, so they have an alternative location to go. And again, I should be clear, I just want to make sure we're clear, I'm sorry. Sometimes a lot of, there are encampments that happen on public property, which are within the city's purview, so something like Seminary Park. There are also lots of incidents where there are encampments that happen on private property. We don't have jurisdiction over what happens with evictions at those encampments, and I cannot speak to how private property owners, what steps they take when they address a situation on their own private property, if that makes sense.
Yes, absolutely. I have in front of me the police general order about homeless encampments, and it says that they will ascertain how many beds are available, but it does not say that they will not clear an encampment based on not having a number, a sufficient number of beds available. Now that was given to me in the summer of 2021, do you know if that has changed?
I would want to take a look at that policy and compare it with the current version of the city's policy on the subject to verify it. I don't know that we're going to be able to do that in the moments that we have here. I cannot say for sure, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, but I can certainly look into that.
Okay. And then actually, the actual question I was going to ask before I was distracted by this other topic, is, is there a general understanding in law of how long items must remain in a location before they're considered to be obstructing?
I talked a little bit about this, I think, with Councilmember Rallo. There's no specific period of time, again, it's going to be based on whether or not there's an intent for those to remain for an unreasonable amount of time in the location, so. And, you know, I think objective measures on something like that sometimes can be unhelpful and can lead to anticipated enforcement, where enforcement wouldn't be appropriate, whereas sometimes giving folks discretion to have time to move something out of the way because somebody's going to be coming by in a certain amount of time might actually be more helpful in this situation. Again, getting all the way to where we would consider something to be a trespass and having to deal with it in a more severe way is absolutely never the goal here. So to the extent we have flexibility to give people an opportunity to rectify a situation on their own, I think that's a feature, not a bug.
Additional questions? Final comment, then. Councilmember Rallo?
I don't want to preclude comment, is this debatable? If I make a motion to table? No motions to table are not debatable. They're not debatable. I will wait then. Yep.
Additional comments? Or comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. Yeah, I can't support this ordinance, and I'd actually be, prefer just to vote no tonight if there was a majority who similarly cannot support it, mainly because I think the level of work that needs to go into a whole set of supports and alternatives, if anything like this were to come again, is extensive and will take months of community engagement and outreach and collaboration between the executive and legislative branch and the whole community to arrive at solutions. So I don't think this is honestly well-suited for just tabling or postponing and bringing back with a few clarifications, you know, in a few weeks' time. So for that reason, I'd actually just prefer to vote it down. I think the conversation earlier tonight highlighted some important problems with respect to, like, disparate treatment of situations and people, you know, whose belongings or property is in the right-of-way. We've known about systemic problems for years with trash bins, and some of what we were highlighting tonight is that we've known about this and done nothing, more or less. And that really flies in the face of everything in the memo from city staff, as well as what we heard from Mr. Rucker tonight. Comments like, "Our core mission is maintaining the public right-of-way, we immediately look to examine why we don't have mechanisms in place to do so, we do our best when we identify an issue that is obstructing the public right-of-way to address it, someone blocks the right-of-way, we need to address it immediately." That's just not the case, and it's obvious that that's not the case. So it strikes me as very disingenuous that this entire thing is framed as an accessibility issue, from, both from city staff and from members of the public who've been doing that, because it's just obviously not. If it was, we'd be tackling the accessibility issues that are known and manifest daily and weekly on our streets, and again, we're not. So I still think those are big problems, and we do need to address them. Scooters, we've made some progress on, but it's not, you know, completely out of the woods on that either, but the sanitation carts is still very troubling. You know, I think, it's also concerning to me, actually, this, what emerged tonight about what happened in late December of 2020 and early January of 2021, it seems like the city probably acted unlawfully in removing people's property from the public right-of-way, when it may not have had authority to do so. That's in addition to risks about, or concerns about constitutionality of telling folks to leave public space when there was evidence that all beds were filled, or rather, that the number of folks in the community at that time exceeded the number of beds available in shelters. I think what we need instead, and what I could support, you know, accompanying something like this, is something more in the vein of Indianapolis's Article 5, protections for the homeless. Specifically, I think we need safe parking spaces for people experiencing homelessness who are able to shelter in their cars, with access to bathrooms, trash, and basic security and safety, ideally a place to store their belongings. We also need safe outdoor spaces for those who are sheltering in tents, either because they're uncomfortable, unwilling to go to a shelter that is a facility, or perhaps they've been kicked out for a short period of time from that shelter, which happens often, or perhaps there simply isn't enough space. So we need those safe spaces, again, with bathroom, trash, and basic security, safety for folks. You know, people in vulnerable situations like that are often the most likely to be victims of harm, and that's why it's very important not to do things like this that simply force them into the margins where they're unseen. We had comments from Mr. Dwyer and others earlier about that exact phenomenon. There are lots of other cities around the country leading in various ways around this, including our peers up in Indianapolis, but there are many other examples, too. Earlier tonight, Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned that three of us were at a local Progress National Convening last weekend, and we heard from some of those cities about what they're doing, and that we could do as well. So I think we really need all of that. And also a reminder, ordinance 2106 in early 2021 was, in fact, trying to do a lot of this. It didn't ultimately pass at that time, but I think it's what we need to move towards. And I think there, again, there are more examples and more evidence and more support from around the country at this point. So that's what I think we need, and I don't think that can be done in the context of this ordinance. So again, I'd prefer to vote it down, and I think for that reason, I would probably vote against tabling or postponing as well.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Where do I start? I am in opposition to this ordinance, I will vote against it. I also don't think it can be saved in any reasonable amount of time, because just the premise of it is something I do not support. I think we should be investing in solutions to the homelessness situation. We have done, the city has been contributing to the Heading Home Plan, which is great, but what we've been less good at is addressing more immediate needs of people who are unhoused. The Heading Home Plan hopefully will give us a solution, you know, in five or 10 years. More housing, of course, is key, but that doesn't happen overnight. And in the meantime, we have people who are struggling to stay alive on our streets, in our public right-of-ways, in our parks. And this ordinance, as Councilmember Flaherty noted, is not about ADA accessibility. If our administration were truly concerned about ADA accessibility, we would have addressed the scooters parking and blocking sidewalks much more quickly, and not just downtown. We would have addressed the problem of trash and recycle bins blocking sidewalks, and other, just sidewalk absence of ramps in heavily traveled pedestrian areas, things like this, and all of those which I have supported, and which we need to continue pursuing, which actually help make our community more accessible. But this ordinance is not about accessibility. This ordinance is about having the legal and law enforcement tools to use against people who are unhoused, who don't have any other place to keep their belongings except with them, and they are in public. So again, it's a further criminalization of being homeless, which I think is inhumane, and therefore I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. I already mentioned that I would be fine voting no on this tonight. I agree with the councilmembers who have spoken that I don't think this is repairable from where it is right now. I think the work we did with 2106, we would need to do something similar again now. I mean, the question we asked there a lot was, if we aren't allowing people to sleep in parks, where do they sleep? And that's definitely not addressed here, if we are also taking away public right-of-way. So some of us did just come from a conference that addressed a little bit some ideas around helping the unhoused, and as Ms. Shaw mentioned, potentially having a safe space, and cities are doing that, safe grounds and safe parking for people without homes, potentially offering tents up for folks to have there, that does have 24-hour surveillance, potentially trash pickup from the city, and bathrooms. So there are, I think, before we take away another space for unhoused neighbors, we have a lot of questions to answer and solutions that need to be found there. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, Councilmember Sandberg?
I will be supporting any motion to table, and that's in fairness and respect to the administration. I think they've heard many things tonight, they've heard valid questions, they've heard valid concerns, and I think there's much more to be worked on before this could be seriously considered again, and I would like to give them the opportunity. There are clearly issues that they would like to have addressed, or they wouldn't be bringing this forward in what I consider to be a bit of a half-baked ordinance. We need to work on the mechanisms, and I will respectfully disagree with my colleagues who want to make any kind of accusation that this is all about law enforcement and being, that's not what I heard in the presentation. -- that's not what I heard in the presentation from our attorney. And so with respect to the communities working for solutions, I would like to give the administration an opportunity to take this back, consider it more, and to perhaps bring it forward with more details that would assure the public that this is a humane effort, this is a community building effort, this is not to be punitive, this is not to be unfair to people who are already disadvantaged. So again, I think this needs more work. Again, would love to have the committee of the whole back, because this just is not ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Bolland.
I can attest to the scooter corrals. I regularly use the sit-down scooters. In downtown now, the scooter will not allow me to end my ride without parking in a corral. So we, in fact, have reserved a new set of public space just to accommodate rental motor vehicles, which appeared in the right-of-way five years ago. I think my colleagues and I have been talking about scooters and garbage cans to highlight the tragedy that we give those obstructions de facto sanction, but we don't allow for human beings who have no recourse the same sanction. I'm peaching from a text by an author named Larry Gersten, who talks about mechanisms that trigger public policy. The scope, the intensity, the duration of the problem, and the resources required to solve the problem. So let's take the scope. How widespread is the problem? Homelessness certainly is widespread, but obstruction of sidewalks by the homeless is almost nonexistent. We had, and the intensity of the problem, how troublesome is it? We had a single incident that triggered this, and certainly, I understand the desire of the legal department to be, to make our code more consistent. But nevertheless, the intensity of the problem of obstruction of the sidewalk is nowhere as dramatic or noticeable as the discomfort that those of us who are housed feel at seeing those who are unhoused. How about the duration of the problem? How long will it last? We've heard that maybe after 10 or 12 hours, it's an issue that they need to move along. And yet, again, in Elm Heights, I regularly see trashcans left out well after, even though the city code says you have to take them in the same day that you put them out, they're regularly left out two, three days, often all week. People are not consistent, and that's not consistently enforced. Finally, resources. How much will it cost to solve the problem? I mean, this ordinance is trying to reduce the administration's costs to enforce the problem. We've heard that we might have to send, to get court orders in order to move certain people out of the right-of-way, and that they could go to great length to enforce things now. But they would also be doing it at great cost to those people whose belongings would be removed, and they'd be doing it at great cost. We would be approving it at great cost to our oaths to serve all the people of Bloomington. Again, the administration does not enforce existing laws regarding the right-of-way now. It regularly allows the sidewalk to be blocked by those constructing buildings without requiring the construction company to set up alternate Jersey barriers and take up some of the automotive right-of-way when that is specified in their permit, and it should always be specified in their permit, that the sidewalk is always open, and that we're not simply blocking the sidewalk or blocking the right-of-way for pedestrians, but not for motor vehicles. The city requires bins to be placed on the sidewalk, creating the very ADA issues that they claim to be trying to resolve. When Mr. Rooker suggests that it's up to the council to allocate spending, I'm afraid that's not correct. The administration determines spending. The council has very primitive tools for affecting spending. We can cut, but not increase. We have basically nuclear options to change the budget. Everything else, we have to persuade the administration to change their fiscal priorities. So, you know, that doesn't fly for me either. In this ordinance, the word storage is not defined, as several others have said. I also find another statement that's poorly defined. The proposed Section 12.04.130(c), quote, "It is not a violation of this section for an individual lawfully permitted or authorized to use the right-of-way, to obstruct the right-of-way in a manner consistent with said permit or authorization. But if they are blocking in a manner inconsistent with their permit, then," and to quote the ordinance, "the city should immediately clear the right-of-way." This is also not adequately defined. The first whereas clause of the ordinance says that the city, quote, "has the power and responsibility to act as a conscientious and diligent steward of the public's right-of-way." Unquote. It is reasonable to assume that the law should be enforced evenly, and that therefore the city would stand by to remove all that construction equipment and fencing blocking the sidewalk as soon as it's out of compliance, and they should be diligent in keeping an eye on the permit to make sure that it's enforced. Of course, we can take more time on this ordinance. We don't have to send it, or you don't have to postpone it. We could do that. We can postpone indefinitely, and that's the very least that should be done. But we can send it to a third reading. That doesn't have to be next week. We can send it to whenever we like. But there is no shame in the administration having brought an ordinance, and there's no shame in the council turning it down and asking them to go back to the drawing board. This ordinance is exactly two pages long. For something as important as it is, it seems to, I mean, Councilmember Sandberg said "half-baked," that's the best way to describe this. It's barely baked, as far as I'm concerned. This is an opportunity, I mean, if they're going to push this, it's an opportunity for us to reexamine enforcement of the placement of garbage cans, the placement of sidewalks, of, I mean, like we already have with scooters. But there's just no good reason to keep this poorly developed ordinance alive. We should simply turn it down and ask them to come back with a new ordinance that takes everything that we've talked about tonight. This conversation has been good. It's been important. A lot of issues have come out, but the ordinance itself does not need to be saved. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Rolla.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is that ordinance 2106 has been mentioned a couple of times, and I see absolutely no value, other than some of the items within that that we talked about. But I see no value in going back to that as part of this legislation. And if I was to vote tonight, I'd vote no. So if we're going to vote tonight, I will not support this. However, I can support a postponement, because I think this is an opportunity, and I think a lot of you folks out here, I don't know if you follow us or not, I'm more of a, let's, is there something in the middle? I mean, that's kind of more like I am, and I don't think we've done that. And I think there's an opportunity to do that. You know, I truly, truly do. Earlier in my comments, I mentioned BEDC, Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber, Monroe County, Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to make sure I get those right. DBI, Downtown Bloomington Incorporated. And I hope no one misinterpreted that I think they were wrong. In fact, these are very legitimate issues with regard to obstructing obstruction of public right-of-ways. Very legit, and I support those. Most of those discussions are centered around downtown. I live out West. I notice a lot of things not done or even concerned about on West Third and some of those businesses out there. And again, I'm not blaming anybody. These are just facts that I'm talking about here. I've heard a lot about solution-based outcomes. And again, no disrespect to people, but that's easy to say, but I've not heard one outcome that is solution-based that was offered. I mean, that's all I'm saying. My colleagues here, I mean, and this is this council, the last four years, we've all talked about this. We've involved other community entities, and yet, we're still here this evening talking about this. There are some fundamental differences, okay? And until we can all kind of get together, take into some things into account that we can, and kind of just discard the crap that we can, you know? But I think there's an opportunity for the community to work for this. Last couple of things I do want to say as a comment. I do not think, in fact, I'm pretty darn sure, that this was not an intention for Bloomington Police Department to have a mechanism to harass or otherwise criminalize our unhoused population. I know a lot of these officers, okay? So I think that is illegitimate. I think it's wrong to say that. Now, I also think that this ordinance would give us a mechanism to do that. Does that make sense? I don't think, I don't think they will, but it can. It will allow that. I was at a peaceful protest on Monroe County Courthouse, up on the grass. Have you all been there? Okay, it was getting time, the protest was over. They said, hey, you guys need to leave. Well, we're still protesting. This is county property. These are the county sheriffs. Oh, no, you got to leave. Where do we go? Go down to the sidewalk. That's what we were told. Go to the sidewalk. Now, what if we pass this ordinance? I'm in a peaceful protest. They say go to the sidewalk. What are me and my fellow protesters, fellow activists, fellow constituents, what are we faced with? See, it's the unintended parts of this that really, really trouble me. I've gotten some comments from other folks throughout the city. It even goes farther than what we're going tonight. It even say this is a mechanism to harass black people, to harass poor people, to harass anybody that's different than, you know, others. We didn't really talk about that tonight, but it's probably just as legitimate as everything else as part of the discussion. So that's my comment tonight. I've known Councilmember Sandberg for a long time. We've used this term "half-baked" or "not fully baked" on a couple of different occasions, and I have to agree that that fits the bill this evening as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rolla.
Well, I'll say about half what I thought I would. First, I want to say thanks to everyone for coming and sharing your views. It's really important to hear from everyone. What I've heard is that it's probably pointless to offer a motion to table, because it would be defeated, so I'm not going to do that. I am going to pass on this tonight, though, because I think that there is, there are good aspects to it. It isn't fully baked, or whatever the metaphor you want to use. And the motion to table was to supply some clarity, which Councilmember Sims just referred to, for potential mending. There's various amendments that could be offered. They're for consistency, because we have examples of blocking of sidewalks and right-of-ways and so forth, of various kinds. So, but I'm not so quick to dismiss the positive impact for accessibility. It refers to it there. I'm very concerned about ADA compliance. I don't think we're doing it very well. In fact, I think we're going backwards. I think pedestrians are undervalued relative to vehicular traffic, and I don't mean just cars, I mean bicycles, too. I think that we've removed crosswalks and stop signs, and we put bicycles on sidewalks, which then was utilized by scooter companies, gave them the latitude to have scooters on sidewalks. And then thus arose the problem of obstruction that now we're trying to solve. So I think that this ordinance could have been a means to really start unpacking some of that, but there we are. So I will just be passing tonight. Perhaps we'll have an opportunity in the future to address this in a more holistic way, and one that is obviously attending to the problems of everybody, all shareholders, stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Okay, I'll just finish up then. My thinking on this exists at two levels, actually. First of all, I'm struck by the several times that Mr. Rooker had to say, you know, there are about a dozen people who are more equipped to comment on that particular question than I am. And I think, I think he's right. No shame there. For that reason, my first preference would be to actually table this and do some more work on it, and make sure it accomplishes what we hope it accomplishes and doesn't accomplish what we don't want it to accomplish. That would be my first choice. Again, I understand that a motion to table is not forthcoming, so that takes me to my second school of thought. We've heard a lot tonight about the need to advocate for a more solution-oriented approach. I couldn't agree more. And I honestly believe we are doing that, and I believe the city is investing substantially in it. Between the hundreds of thousands we have invested in heading home, between the thousands and thousands we have invested in social service agencies through Jack Hopkins, hundreds of thousands over multiple years, I do believe we are advocating for a more solution-oriented approach to that. So I don't accept the assertion that the city is heartless and simply not doing anything productive in that regard. I think the tension exists, because at the same time we are advocating for a long-term solution-based approach, we also have real-time challenges to deal with, and that's how I take this particular ordinance. I take it as an attempt to respond to some real-time challenges that we encounter with public obstruction of the right-of-way. I agree with the statements that we've heard about trash bins and recycling bins and scooters that all obstruct the right-of-way as well, and I don't think we pay enough attention to those issues as well, so I'm glad to hear those come up. I think that does not take away, in my mind, from what is a very reasonable ordinance here, and what this requests and what we are being asked to consider here, particularly the four criteria that are laid out, seem very reasonable to me. And so for that reason, I am inclined to support this if we were to vote on it. Again, my first would be to table this and come back to it after doing some more refinements. But again, in this, given the need to both advocate for long-term solutions and respond to real-time challenges, that would be my initial reaction to this. So if there are no further comments, I'm going to invite Councilmember Flaherty.
Thanks. I do have a little bit of follow-up. Thank you. Sort of prompted by Councilmembers Campbell, Leary's comments just now, which I agree that some of the events of the last few years in particular have moved the city more actively into the space of pursuing solutions, but I think you really hit on the crux of it, which is, and sort of Councilmember Piedmont Smith frankly earlier, that there are long-term solutions. They're slow-moving. The goal of heading home is to keep homelessness brief, rare, and non-repeating. It's not to answer the question, when there's no shelter bed for someone, where can they legally sleep tonight? It doesn't answer that question, nor does it answer the question, where can you keep your belongings during the day, you know, if you don't have shelter? Where can you go to the bathroom? Where can you throw away trash, you know, easily? How do you have safety and security for yourself? So these, I'll harken again to the Local Progress National Convening, which we just attended, and there was a real emphasis in looking at helping our unhoused neighbors of the need for both of those, both those long-term solutions, which, yes, the community has sort of gotten around and, you know, or rallied around and started to put resources to, certainly not enough resources, but some resources. There's that, and then there's interim solutions that are not permanent solutions. You know, with all respect to Councilmember Sims, you know, I'm going to bring up ordinance 2106 again, and one of the criticisms at that time was that these weren't solutions. And I didn't have the language, actually, the vocabulary for it. They are. They're interim solutions. They're interim temporary solutions dealing with the pragmatic tragedy of, that we face in our cities, of folks having not even the basic minimum of, you know, safety and security. We have to have those interim solutions, because the long-term solutions take time and a lot of resources that we frankly have a hard time devoting as a city for a variety of reasons. of resources that we frankly have a hard time devoting as a city for a variety of reasons. So I wanted to mention that because I don't want us to lose sight of that, and inviting, too, the Chamber of Commerce and BEDC and DBI, who have, you know, commented on these issues over time. Those have been supportive partners of kind of the long-term solution approach more broadly. They've been opponents of the interim solutions that are needed to deal with the pragmatic realities we face when we have tried to bring those into the conversation in the past. So I'll just reiterate that things like safe, designated safe spaces, sanitation, bathrooms for folks experiencing homelessness are very much needed as part of this. It's essential. It's a requirement for me to be able to support something like this ordinance, and it's what I would like and hope for the focus to be, you know, in the community and with the folks who've engaged on this, as well as city staff, moving past this moment and what we look at next. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2320? It's Councilmember Rosenberg.
No.
Sims?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Pass.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
And Flaherty?
No.
My count -- thank you. My count is 251. Thank you. So that motion fails. That takes us to legislation for first readings. And there are none there. That brings us to our second of two periods of public comment for items not on the agenda, not on our legislative agenda this evening. Mr. Lucas, could you please extend our invitation on Zoom? Is there anyone in chambers who would like to offer public comment for items not on the agenda? I see one. Mr. Lucas, go ahead.
Yes, if there are other members of the public joining via Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or sending a chat to the meeting host.
Welcome. If you would, I'm not seeing any other hands in chambers. Okay. Welcome. If you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Christopher MG, from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, but really talking as a citizen and a purveyor of local government. I see the Council Committee on Council Processes meets tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. This is their first meeting since May. I will not be able to make it for that, but you're going over the NOVAC report, which I have referenced several times here, and we're getting kind of near the clock on when this committee can really make some valuable recommendations to streamline the processes for the next council that comes in, and I'm afraid that it's going to just fall through the cracks. So it's my hope to see that committee really make a diligent effort to meet enough time to get those recommendations and to give the next council a chance to really make this an easier process for the council. It's a lot of work for staff. It's a lot of work for council, and I think we can do a better job, and this was the opportunity to do it, and I feel like it's not there yet, and we are nearing the end of the year. And after that, I don't -- it's a lot to ask a lot of new members to just start looking at processes they're not familiar with. I thank you for your time, and we'll see you next week. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
And is there anyone here in chambers? Going once, going twice? Okay. In which case, let's come back to council and take up matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas?
Our last speaker actually mentioned the one item I was going to note, which is that the council has a meeting -- the special committee on council processes has a meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00. Beyond that, the council will next meet next Wednesday for a regular session. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Councilmember Volin.
Do we have resolutions coming for next week's meeting if there's nothing else on the agenda?
We have a report coming next week.
Two ordinances likely to come forward for first reading. One related to the Hopewell development and a vacation of right-of-way request for first reading. Second ordinance will be a Title 15 amendment related to stop locations along the 7th Line. So those items are scheduled to be introduced for first reading. Beyond that, there's a report scheduled from the Bloomington Arts Commission, and also may be an opportunity for the council to conduct a review of the CAPS Commission as called for by ordinance 2020, which established that commission. So there will be some business on the agenda.
The reason I ask is if -- what was the number of the second ordinance? The one, the second first reading that's going to happen next?
There's a Title 15 ordinance related to stop locations on 7th Street.
If it's not particularly controversial, perhaps we might entertain unanimous consent to hear it in one night, so we can hear it that night in order to -- because I'm already anticipating the logjam of legislation that'll happen by the end of the year. So just thinking out loud, it's not something we have to decide right now, but I was looking to see if we needed to have the meeting after all. It sounds like we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1723.21][1723.21][music]